Is this on? You can hear, okay. I'm going to call the four o'clock meeting to order. Ask for roll call, please.
Mayor Davis.
Here.
Commissioner Hay.
Here.
Commissioner Hodges.
Here.
Commissioner Hoppick. And Commissioner Ryan.
Here.
If you're able, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance in a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Awards and proclamations, I don't believe there aren't anys, so we can go straight to Citizens Forum. If there are citizens who want to discuss an item that's not on the agenda, feel free to come forward, but without too much of an expectation that we're going to have an answer to a complex question for you, but might get us rolling in the direction of trying to find answers. Anyone want to come up?
My name is John Blanchard, 1117 State Street. First of all, thank you for allowing this Citizens Forum, and I'd like to thank personally, Mayor Davis.
Well, thank you, sir.
Kind of has a nice ring to it. So, been waiting a while to do that, so I wish you all the best and not going to give you any complex problems here to solve. Just two things. One is that we had initially, and I had initially wanted to come before you in one of your first meetings to talk about meeting changes on dates and times. That's probably a better time when we can present that program to all of you when Commissioner Hoppick is here as well, because it is something that we would like to address to all of you but early in your term so that we can maybe get some traction and movement on this. What I would like to talk to you about is, though, at the last meeting when we were talking about the special assessment advisability for Stone Lake, I came to the podium during the Citizens' comment portion and followed up to a couple of questions that Commissioner Hodges had asked, and I felt either were not answered properly, correctly, or completely accurately, and I brought that up at the time, and I was wondering if you had a chance to look into those two items.
I apologize. If you could remind me of the two topics.
Yeah, they were. The two questions, one was regarding how much tax revenue was being generated by those lots, and the answer was hundreds of dollars a year on the vacant lots. And then the second question was regarding the egress for the length of road, which is, Phase 1 was 2,500 feet, and the additional 17 lots was another 900 feet. And the comments were made that it wasn't required at the time, meaning either that it wasn't a requirement or that it, or that staff didn't require it. And I went back and looked at a couple of different examples of that one. First of all, the first, the first part was that 21 of those lots have been valued at $300, assessed $300 value on agricultural use, which the, the total tax bill on that is $4.16, and so the city portion of that is probably about 80 cents at the most. If you could look into that, that would be great. I spent about an hour and I went through and, and looked at the total taxes that have been collected on the homes that were built, the vacant lots and everything, over the last six years have added up to $475 a lot. So, I don't think anybody would argue that that in any way has come close to paying for itself. The one that I'm more concerned with, though, because that's something that I'd be happy to share with you, Mike, I can send you the information that I, that I got on that. My concern, though, is that with the fire, with, with the Fire Marshal's requirement for egress, and I looked at three different projects that were brought up in this, in that meeting two weeks ago and then, and the ones in the past, and they dealt with Prairie, Prairie, Grand Prairie. That street, bent grass, I think it is, is 2,000 feet long and it serves 40, or I'm sorry, 2,000 feet long serves 37 lots. It hasn't got to fa, to the phase where it requires the road, but, but apparently there is an emergency road required across the golf course.
Correct.
The tot, it only, it didn't have that many lots platted on it yet, but that's what the total is, 37, okay? Prairie Lane is, depending on how you want it classified, is either 500-foot cul-de-sac or about a roughly 1,400-foot cul-de-sac, and there are 51 lots in the first couple of phases. At this phase that is just being bid now, I believe, requires a fire lane for egress, and that's, that's part of this. So, the question is, at Stone Lake, it's a 2,500-foot-long cul-de-sac with 34 lots on it, you add 17 to it, we now have a 3,400-foot-long cul-de-sac with 51 lots. Now, the problem with that project is, is that we are to understand that the egress will be provided by Phase 2 of that project. However, what was proposed and what was passed for special assessments two weeks ago was what on the plat, and during the plating process was always considered Phase 4. So, we leapfrogged Phase 2 and Phase 3, and we even heard from the applicant that it's highly unlikely that anything will be built on Phase 2 for quite some time. So, I'm a little concerned that perhaps we're setting up a scenario where we got a whole lot of people hanging out there quite far, and I think we just need to make clear, maybe, when the questions are asked from, from the dais and from the podium here, are we talking about number of units that trigger, you know, an emergency egress or egress? Is it number of lots, is it length, or is it a combination thereof?
Yeah, my, my recollection from the code is, number of lots pertains to the subdivision design and the need for a second entrance, and then there's also a length requirement as it applies to dead ends and cul-de-sacs. So, as an example, you could have a subdivision that would require, be required to have two entrances based on lot number, but then you could also have a length of run within that same subdivision that would have length limitations on it due to, you know, the dead-end nature of a particular street within the subdivision.
Okay. Because there are some, as you could tell, there are some inconsistencies in there. If 37 lots at 2,000 feet long require emergency egress, then certainly 51 lots at 3,400 feet would certainly require that.
No, I understand your point. I don't know the history of the plat approval well enough to speak to it, but I understand your point.
Okay. And so, I appreciate your indulgence. I know it was a 3-2 vote. I don't know if some of those considerations for public safety perhaps might be a consideration or something to reconsider, that you might decide that jumping to Phase 4 might not be advisable. So, and I understand that today would be the last, would be the meeting for the ability to reconsider, which would, of course, be the governing bodies, sir. But I would at least ask that you consider that and make sure that we are fully within the Fire Marshal's comfort zone.
Right. I think we can certainly look at the applicable fire codes at the time the plat was approved, and another alternative is, in the Grand Prairie instance, that there's a provision for a temporary access point that, that limits access just to the Fire Department. So, if there's a life safety concern, that's probably the most likely solution.
Okay. And I apologize, I'd have brought some of this up last time, but I think we were trying to get the new mayor out of here and over to Martinelli, so I appreciate your indulgence today. I know I went over time, but thank you very much.
You're welcome. Ms. Driscoll?
Yeah, just a point of clarification. The action that was taken at the last meeting was a request to authorize the preparation of the engineering feasibility study. So, the subdivision wasn't approved. I mean, the first step in that process has been approved, so the engineering feasibility study is what's being prepared right now. So, the body would then take a second action to finally approve the special assessment.
Is that something, though, if, and I realize this isn't on the agenda, but is that something that it might be helpful for the developer to understand, his engineering team to understand that a second egress might be required at this phase? Because, I mean, the thing is, if we've authorized the feasibility and the engineering study and it comes back and it's just the single ingress and egress that we talked about last time, and then we take a look at it and have the Fire Marshal take a look at it and see how it lines up with our codes, then I assume that they would be performing that exercise again?
Staff can certainly have that conversation with them. In terms of that design and that cost estimate, I think that's a relatively easy task for our staff without the need of their engineer necessarily to identify the possible location, the length, and a cost estimate. So, I don't know that it would have, cause them to have to revisit their design as much as it might be an ad alternate that we talk with them about, and we can have that information when we come back to you. But to Ms. Driscoll's point, today, last week nor today are kind of a point of no return or creating the obligation. It's really, we've divided that special assessment process into two steps, confirming with the City Commission, there's interest enough in the development for staff to put the time into reviewing their design and preparing the cost estimates, and then ultimately that'll come back to you for a resolution of advisability. So, we can, we can staff that through both from the way of conversations as well as cost estimates between now and the time the resolution of advisability would come back to you.
I think that would certainly be something to make sure that Mr. Walsh is aware of, and Mr. Barclay, is that the, the name of the?
It was Dean Barclay, but that particular development is Mr. Bradley, Doug Bradley.
Bradley, okay, yeah.
I know that's not an agenda item, but there's no action needed from us.
If you're comfortable with what I described in terms of staff collaborating with them, in the meantime, we'll do that without any formal direction necessary.
Any hesitancy? No. Okay. Thank you.
Great. Thank you.
No one else? One more.
Daniel Lechoff, 2664 Highland. I guess I'll just preface this with an article I just saw right before I came here. There were similar, I guess, BB gun shootings within our city, which seems to have become, well, it's been a problem as long as I can remember, several years. Just kind of led me into the thought of wondering, you know, how are we doing on assessing our police force, what we need to do to support them? I don't know if there's anywhere we can go and get an update on what's being done.
I can try to give you an update on both topics, and not to discount it at all. Chief and I talked to this morning, actually. He gave me an update on the BB gun shooting, and I shared with him that when I was in high school, which was a long time ago in a different town, it was, that was what my classmates were doing back then, but I'm not dismissing it by any means. They, I believe they, they have one person identified and hope that that leads to identification of others. So, the Police Department, with respect to that particular incident, is on top of it. We shared, the Police Department and the Chief of Police shared with the department the organizational assessment that was done recently, and then we continue to meet, myself and the HR Director and the Chief and Deputy Chief on a, we have a standing meeting where we're taking that to the next level in terms of identifying what that organizational study did, identifying implementation options and communications within the department. So, I'm, I'm not going to say that we're going to solve the staffing problem, because law enforcement hiring is a, is a challenge beyond just our department. But as it relates to the specifics of our department, the Chief and Deputy Chief have engaged very well, and we're just getting started on the response to that.
Is there any kind of public report that is being released from that information that's compiled?
Other than the report itself, there's no public response or report at the moment. As we identify, you know, efforts within the department, depending on what they are, we might be able to share those publicly, but some of it's personnel matter related and some of it's just kind of organizational, trying to make incremental change, and when the opportunity presents itself, we'll share what we can.
Thank you.
Staff is prepared to date. We're two for two. Anyone else want to come up? All right. We have no public hearings and items scheduled for a certain time, so we can proceed to the consent agenda.
Item 6.1, approve the minutes of January 14, 2019. Item 6.2, approve Resolution Number 19-7659, appointing members to the Arts and Humanities Commission, Business Improvement District Design Review Board, and Salina Airport Authority. Item 6.3, award contract for the Red Fox Lane Sanitary Sewer Rehabilitation to Smokey Hill LLC in the amount of $166,866. Item 6.4, approve Resolution Number 19-7656, authorizing the mayor to execute a license agreement with Sammy's OC LLC to allow awning and canopy structures to extend over a public alleyway at the rear of the old Chicago Pizza and Tap Room Restaurant at 214 South Santa Fe Avenue. Item 6.5, accept the Offered Drainage Easement Dedication for a Detention Basin serving the Exchange Bank Development Site at 1720 South Ohio Street, and authorize the mayor to sign the easement document, accepting the easement on behalf of the city. Item 6.6, authorize the city manager to pay the annual invoice for dues and subscriptions to the League of Kansas Municipalities in the amount of $20,752.85. And Item 6.7, approve Resolution Number 19-7658, authorizing the mayor to execute a vault closure agreement, allowing for closure, closure of an underground sidewalk vault and the public right-of-way located at 129 South Santa Fe Avenue, north half of Lot 123 with Wyatt and Sullivan Law LLC.
Thank you. Are there any items that Commissioner would want removed from the consent agenda? Well, in that case, entertaining motion. Mayor, I move that we approve the consent agenda as presented. Second. It's been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda. Any further discussion? All in favor, we say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Passes four to zero. Now, move to Administration, 7.1.
Item 7.1, second reading ordinance number 19-10992, amending the conditions of approval and ordinance number 88-9280, which vacated a portion of the frontage road located on the south side of East Cloud Street, east of Ohio Street.
Okay, this ordinance was passed on first reading in January 14, 2019, and since that time, no comments have been received. Is there any other information staff would feel needs to be presented?
Nothing I'm aware of.
Right. Any Commissioners, questions, comments? Any public comment on this? Is there any action to be taken?
Mr. Mayor, I'd make a motion when you pass ordinance number 19-10992 on second reading.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to pass ordinance number 19-10992. This require?
Roll call.
Commissioner Hay.
Aye.
Commissioner Hodges.
Aye.
Commissioner Ryan.
Aye.
Mayor Davis.
Aye. So, this passes four to nothing. Item 7.2.
Item 7.2, Resolution Number 19-7660, authorizing the mayor to execute the Kansas Limited Warranty deed with Covenant with Salina Educational Automotive Museum of America Incorporated to transfer ownership of Fourth Street parking lot.
Ms. Schreik.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. As part of my report, I intended to give you the address of the Fourth Street parking lot, but the way the county address is vacant lots, it was five zeros and Fourth Street. So, it, the best I can do to describe it for you is if you're familiar with the, where images recycling was located, to the parking lot to the south, it's between two buildings that have been acquired by, I want to get this name right, the Salina Educational Automotive Museum of America, Inc., has acquired the two buildings on either side of the parking lot that we own on Fourth Street. And so, the action item before you today is transferring ownership of that, that parking lot to that same group for the purpose of developing the car museum that, that was part of the Star Bond Plan. As you may remember, the development agreement that we initially entered into contemplated the transfer of the property. The transfer agreement that we entered into with the car museum organization also contemplated that, and then the Star Bond that was submitted to the, the Department of Commerce for approval and was the basis of our authorization for Star Bond issuance, also contemplated development of the car museum on that property. And so, we've just recently entered into the transfer agreement. The development agreement called out February 1 as the deadline for that, that transfer, and there is a provision of reversion back to the city in the event that development doesn't happen in five years. And it was worded such that rather than there be an automatic reversion, it gives us the right to elect for reversion if that deadline is not met going forward. And so, you know, in the event that, that there's conversation to be had in five years, which I doubt that there will be, but in the event that there is, we retain the, the right to elect for that ownership to revert. So, I don't want to be overly dismissive in terms of it being perfunctory, but by way of the development agreement and the transfer agreement and the Star Bond Plan, this is kind of the culmination of, of those commitments that were previously made. With respect to the strategic plan, as I've mentioned before, as it relates to the Star Bond project, there's quite a few items in our strategic plan that the downtown redevelopment seem to hit on. Salina will be a city that's exciting to live in and thriving economically and socially, a city that is clean, attractive, and inviting. It'll be a place with a quality of life that not only appeals to residents but to visitors, it'll be attractive and well-maintained, and evident that good housekeeping and high community standards are valued. It will be committed to providing the highest quality services within available resources. A downtown Salina will be thriving and vibrant. Salina will be supportive of lifelong learning through all forms of education. Salina will be a town that's respectful of its heritage, and Salina will encourage and be supportive of industrial development, economic expansion, and market-driven tax-based growth, and homegrown entrepreneurialism. There's no fiscal impact associated with this action item. I didn't elaborate on the connection to the Star Bond financing, but it is one of the commitments that was made as part of the Star Bond Plan to make the, the downtown redevelopment project possible. So, the, the options that we've identified for your consideration would be to approve the resolution authorizing the mayor to execute the warranty deed. You could approve it with resolution, with amendments, I'm sorry, and if that were the case, I would strongly recommend that legal counsel is going to need to work with you on any type of amendment. You could postpone consideration to a specified date, recognizing that February 1 is the deadline for the development agreement. If there's anything that mayor's postponing, that probably is going to necessitate a, a special meeting to comply with that deadline, and you could vote to deny the resolution resulting in denial of the property transfer, which would then call into question our compliance with the development agreement, the transfer agreement, and the Star Bond Plan. So, with that, I know there's some representatives of the, the car museum here as well. I appreciate their being here. I didn't reach out to them and specifically ask them to be prepared to make a presentation, but in the event that you have any questions, they might be able to help me answer them. So, I also did attach some of the attachments from the transfer agreement, just as kind of a reminder of the description of the project and the, the renderings that have been provided so far for the project. So, I believe the parking lot is kind of that interway lobby connection between the two buildings they already own and kind of ties together the museum project. So, with that, I'd be happy to try to answer any questions.
Any questions and comments?
I think my questions are probably better answered by the car museum folks. Unless, I'll, I'll go ahead and start.
Well, I can try.
Yeah, is there, is there an anticipated start date for the construction of the car museum? And basically, my question just goes to, at what point do we lose the, will the public lose access to that parking lot? Yeah.
Well, I know plan, design is underway, but Mr. Pestinger probably can answer that better than I.
Hi, Tom Pestinger. 125 East Avenue A. The plans are being developed right now. Jones and Gillum are working on it. We have started demo on the south building. Hopefully, this will go out to bid, probably within a month, month and a half, and then our, our plans are to have it completed by July of 1920. So...
How about 2020?
2020.
2020, excuse me. 1920.
I know what you meant.
So, any other questions?
Well, so, I'm... Well, so I'm sorry, you said the construction will begin when this, in the summer?
Well, I'm going to say probably the latter part of the summer, probably August. We're estimating it's going to take about a year to do, so hopefully we will be under construction by August, so.
Okay. And is it, will it be likely that the public will still have access to that parking for the time being, or no, it's going to be fenced off?
It'll be gone, it'll be gone right away. Like I said, we've actually started demo in the other two buildings, and it's, we'll probably start there fairly quick, because the more we can get done before, better off we are, so.
Thank you, Mr. Pestinger. Any comment from the public?
Hi, I'm Abner Purney. I own property at two twelve East Iron, which is immediately north of the museum, and then one forty-seven South Fourth Street across the street from it on Fourth Street. And I'm bringing forth, first that I support the, today's action. But what I want you to do is to carefully consider the parking implications for Fourth Street and the remaining development implications for Fourth Street. And part of the problem is, well, I've owned the building there since ninety-five, so for twenty-four years, I've been on that street every day that I've been in town, basically. And so I've observed how it works, probably more than anybody else that's in the room right now. But anyway, so I'm concerned about the loss of the thirty-two parking spaces, and then how the two plans for the river and the twenty-twenty are going to come together and merge regarding traffic and parking. I just checked with Jane Anderson, and it's my understanding that currently there is final or more detailed plans being drawn up for the plaza, pedestrian access, and a playground in essentially the immediate vicinity of Fourth and Iron and the river, which contains no parking considerations whatsoever at this point. And that the overall plan from the riverside is that the several buildings on the east side of the street, where my one forty-seven is, where the Salina Arts Center Warehouse is, are kind of identified as an arts and cultural activity area. Well, currently, there is, other than the Arts Center, there's relatively little activity there. There is the Shannon's Stars Twirling Education Center, and then my small building and a small flea market in it. And then the other big building that has a lot of potential is just being used for storage for a commercial painting company. But the longer range, the ten, twenty-year range of activity is that there could be a lot more activity in those buildings, and then also in the remaining property back on the west side where the museum is. From the museum's south, there's a lot of potential for more activity. Well, what happens now, and in recent years, is that when there's a good activity going on at the Arts Center Warehouse, and the Shannon Stars are practicing or having a, they have meetings that bring in twenty or thirty cars by themselves, there's enough parking demand to put parking on the parking lot that is now going to go to the art mu, the car museum. So we're losing thirty-two spaces. To come to the numbers, we're losing thirty-two parking spaces on, in that parking lot. There are currently twenty-three spaces on the east side of the street in the relatively new, redeveloped by the city, curbside parking, angle parking. If you did the same thing on the west side, and right now on the west side, you need to be aware that there are old railroad tracks from an old siding, and there is no sidewalk, and there's no curb. So, and I don't know which plan that is going to be rectified under. If that's a twenty-twenty project, a Star Bonds project, or is that the river project, or is that something completely different? So we need to look at that. What, how is, how is that street going to be finished? The current plan looks great, and it shows a sidewalk along the entire Fourth Street frontage of the museum, the car museum, and an obvious curb in the, I know it's only preliminary architectural, but it's obvious curb. And the floor plan is superimposed over the present street, and it doesn't show anything about what parking's going to be marked off. Currently, on that west side of the street, there are nine parallel parking spaces. If it were redeveloped with the sidewalk as narrow as practicable and the full right-of-way of the street used, it looks to me that you could mirror the angle parking that's on the east side of the street and probably get about seventeen spaces in there. That's eight more than the nine. So then we're only losing twenty-four spaces to the Fourth Street presently. And then in the bigger, longer picture, if the building at Fourth and Walnut, the old lumberyard owned by Bill Medina, was ever redeveloped, there's potential there for something that could have another parking area, maybe identical to the thirty-two units we're going to lose here. Potentially, you could have a parking area about identical to the thirty-two units that we're going to lose immediately north of the existing buildings at the north end of the current development in the vacant land that is there now that is proposed, I guess, for the playground. I don't know how big the playground needs to be. I would think it wouldn't have to be very big, judging on, and I'm going there from my experience in Estes Park. Downtown Estes Park, Colorado, has a city parking lot adjacent to the river and a street, and that playground is used all the time, but I bet it's only forty by sixty feet. So it's not nearly as big, and it's very active and successful, and more than I can imagine that we'd have in traffic demand for a kid's playground right there. So I'm saying that it looks like there's enough land, if that land is going to go to a public or quasi-public purpose, that there could potentially be parking right there. And then that, that helps reinforce places for people to park and then get on their feet and be on the Riverwalk and walk downtown and get over to Fifth Street and go to the car museum, et cetera. At any rate, I just want to point out that there really is a need for parking there. We've already seen it go to the point that that space is used for activities on Fourth Street with the very limited businesses that are already there and the Arts Center. The other thing I've noticed just in this month, because it just opened, the new yoga studio at Fourth and Walnut gets thirty cars, boom, for a class. They've been parking on Fourth Street. Fortunately, they're doing that early in the morning frequently. That's when I've noticed them the most. But they're using some of these nine spaces that are there that could be converted to seventeen, I think. So there's my big questions. When is, when is curb and gutter and sidewalk going to be done on Fourth Street, and which project is it in? And please coordinate it and see that you get as many parking spaces as possible out of what street's already there. And as far as that goes, the sooner the better on the car museum.
Thank you. Glad I prefaced the remarks without promising any answers, but Mr. Pestinger, so I want to put you on the spot. Did you have any information you could shed as far as your understanding of parking arrangements that would go in with the car museum?
I might be able to take them off the hook. I don't know that there's any parking requirements expected of the car museum. In direct answer to Mr. Purney's question of which project is, are the Fourth Street improvements part of, the answer would be neither. We looked at Fourth Street improvements as part of the scope for the streetscape improvements for the Star Bond Project, but ultimately, they were not part of that budget or part of that design. I think Mr. Purney's right, or I think he's on the right track in terms of dimensions, and we can look at what opportunities are there. We can also look as we design the plaza, and if you're not familiar with it, it is south of the Iron Street Bridge, along Fourth Street is the intended, designed at the moment for the plaza. So as we look at that plaza area, the playground area at Fourth Street, we are going to have to factor that into our discussions. More broadly, we are getting feedback already about the need for parking in the downtown, that, you know, activity is picking up and parking's at a premium. So that's a good problem to have, but it's something that we're going to have to factor into our capital improvement planning and our design work.
So basically, when I look at the rendering of the bird's eye perspective view from Fourth Street and, I see the sidewalk there, that's actually not, not going to be there? Or, or is it? And also, it's on the site plan and the roof plan?
Yeah. I'm sorry. With respect to parking, there's no expectation of the car museum to work on that site for parking. In terms of sidewalk work, we'll need to coordinate with that project as well as kind of our capital improvement plan, just to coordinate not only the improvements but the elevation, so everything matches up. But I guess I was answering the question more broadly along that Fourth Street corridor. At the moment, there's not, it's not part of the streetscape plan for the Star Bond Project to improve the Fourth Street corridor or the parking on the west side, as Mr. Purney had described.
It's not in the capital improvement plan then either.
Not at the moment, no.
John Blanchard, eleven seventeen State. One thing that concerns me is during your staff presentation, you said there was no fiscal note. Now I'm hearing all this future capital improvement plans. Is there any way we can definitively say, we'll remove the thirty-two parking units, and then we won't need to put any more in? Or can you put a value to what those thirty-two units would be? Because from a fiscal impact perspective, and I'm with Abner on this, and I think a lot of people, I appreciate the fact that they're reusing those old buildings and, and making it part of downtown and everything. And know the procedure that was taken to make that land available through the development agreement and so on. So it's not about whether or not they should pay for it, but the taxpayers should really have an accurate idea of what is being invested in the project. And I've asked several times for an accurate tally of what the taxpayer portion of the project has been, because we've done utility relocations. We're not only putting in this parking, and I agree also with Mr. Purney on, with the fact that that does get used quite a bit during special events over at the Art Warehouse. And, but we gave away the parking lot and didn't consider it part of the city's contribution to the four and a half million for the fieldhouse, along with the utility relocation and stuff. And I think at some point, we need to accurately reflect the taxpayers' contribution, whether it be stuff we contract for or in-kind, because there, there has been a lot of that. And then just one quick question, I've asked it before, but this begs the question. Again, it doesn't go to not being supportive of the project, but it's, what is the procedure that the city goes through to determine what is or isn't surplus property? Because if we're saying that can be given away, apparently we don't have to make any determination from the governing body that we don't need it and that it's surplus, and therefore we can give it away. What is the process for that? I know I asked Jason Gage that during the process with the fieldhouse and the property that we contributed to that, but just wondered if we, if you might, now that you're in the hot seat, have what that procedure might be. And I would just, in a nutshell, just, I think we need to more accurately reflect what the taxpayers' portion of, of the contribution is so that we can have that accurate accounting.
So I had three takeaways. One was the fiscal note, and I did not call out a cost in the fiscal note because I didn't see these as related. I mean, this is still a discretionary decision on your part, whether you wish to do anything on Fourth Street, replace the parking, anything related to that. There's, there's not a direct cost that you will incur as a result of making the decision that's before you today. With respect to the in-kind contribution, it's been quite some time ago, but I think at Commissioner Hodges' request, I've previously itemized our contribution to utilities and kind of the nature of the development agreement. I can't say without going back and looking whether this particular parking lot was called out in that itemization or not. If that's something that you as a commission would be interested in, I can certainly update that. And then with respect to surplus property, the only thing I'm aware of that relates to park property, I believe there is a provision that we're subject to statutorily, to make a determination for the disposal of surplus property. Beyond that, it's much more discretionary on your part as a governing body, so just by the entering into the agreements that you have, you've exercised your discretion to, I guess, by default, declare it surplus and make it part of this development agreement.
Just speaking for myself, I mean, I remember when you created the, kind of the inventory of taxpayer contributions, and I can't remember, I'm with you, I can't remember whether this parking lot was, was on that or not, but that would be an updated list that, just speaking for myself, I would like to see. And I hate to keep coming back to it, and maybe I just didn't understand the answer to your question earlier, but at this point, the sidewalks that are shown in the plans, that's not a responsibility of the car museum, and it's not something that we have budgeted. Am I, am I understanding that correctly?
Right. We will work with them in terms of the design of their site as they develop that site, so we may have to look at what they're doing to the site and the sidewalks and coordinate if there's any demolition and replacement. But with respect to the length of Fourth Street, that was not part of a streetscape improvement. As you may recall, we had streetscape improvements in a number of phases as part of the Star Bond Plan.
Right.
Fourth Street was not one of those improvements.
All right. And actually, from my memory, I think the price or the value of this parking lot was included in that list, but I can't remember what it was.
Off the top of my head, I can't recall one way or the other.
But that's certainly something that we can update, and a good point. Thanks for bringing that up. Any other public comment on this issue? And Mr. Purney, thanks for the comments.
Thank you.
Comments, questions, and suggestions, so we'll be smarter the next time we talk about it. Any desire for any action on this resolution?
Mr. Mayor, I move we approve resolution number one nine seven six six oh, authorizing the mayor to execute the Kansas Limited Warranty Deed with Covenant with Salina Education Automotive Museum of America, Inc., to transfer ownership of Fourth Street Parking Lot.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion?
The only thing that I would just like to have included in the minutes, if possible, is that the concerns about the lack of parking and the need for a sidewalk have been noted by property owners, and is something that we will have to give ongoing consideration to as that area is developed for the river renewal project.
Very good point. All right. All in favor of approving resolution nineteen dash seven six six oh, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries four to zero. And seven point three. Guess I can save you the time of reading it, since you only have three words to say anyway. The, each city commissioner is appointed to certain boards for the calendar year, and I'll just read them out loud. I will be on the Salina Area Chamber of Commerce Board and the Salina Public Library Board. Vice Mayor Hoppick will be on the Salina Airport Authority, Salina Celine County Building Authority, and the Economic Development Organization. Commissioner Hodges will be on the Salina Celine County Building Authority and the North Central Regional Planning Commission. Commissioner Ryan will be on the Salina Housing Authority and Arts and Humanities, and Commissioner Hay will be on the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board and Convention and Tourism. Anyone want to make any changes now? Okay. And been told I don't really need to, we don't need to take any formal action, so to speak.
That's the one thing that seems to be the mayor's prerogative.
Pregot, all right. I will execute that with my colleagues' support and blessing here. Development business, we have none. Other business? Other business?
Oh, is this, is this my moment, city clerk? Mayor Davis, how would you prefer that we handle this? Would you prefer that we do, do this in three separate executive sessions, or would you like to swing for the fences and do one big one with a longer time?
It may be useful for the city attorney to explain why it is possible to do them all together versus separate, if that would be helpful.
Under fairly recent amendments to the statute and a recent Attorney General's opinion, we have the guidance that anytime we are under the same justification, which in this case, all three subjects fall within the attorney, the need for an attorney-client privilege discussion, those can be aggregated in terms of the time of the executive session. If we are in different justifications, those have to be handled separately. I think you've seen that recently when we've done that. So it is your prerogative as to whether you aggregate them in terms of the proposed time or regard them separately?
My personal preference would be to try to do it in one fell swoop.
Aggregate?
Yes. It seems to be.
Forty-five minutes?
Recognizing it's better to underestimate than over, yes, let's try 45.
Forty-five minutes, all right.
I hurt my heart.
Well, are you feeling lucky? You want me to go 30?
Yeah. I respect the staff's opinion.
Okay, all right. I move that the city commission recess into executive session for 45 minutes to discuss the subjects of negotiations with, one, Celine County relating to the road annexation and impact fee agreement, two, Celine County relating to the Expo Center lease agreement, and three, Pestinger Enterprises, LLC, relating to acquisition of the site for construction of the police training facility with legal counsel based upon the need for consultation with an attorney for the public body, which would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship pursuant to KSA 45-7319B2. The open meeting will resume in this room at 5:33.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Is it anticipated there'd be any action afterwards?
Not on any of those three items.
All right, thank you. We'll call the question. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we will recess into executive session.